The May 1st, 2023 Meeting of Anorond County Council was now back in session. We are back here for our regular legislative work meeting. For those that are probably watching online, just FYI, we actually had opened up our session this morning at 11:00 a.m., and so we did the prayer, as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you don't see that, it's we're just continuing on with our workday with these sessions. And so just for those that are watching online, that's why we're not doing that at the moment. Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics saving.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
We will now open our invitation to the audience. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
And I also don't see that anyone signed up for invitation to the audience. Is there any member in this? Oh, welcome. I'm sorry. So is there if there's anyone who would like to speak at this time for anything that's not on the printed agenda, please come forward. You will be given two minutes. State your name and address for the record and go forward. Ms. Johnson, welcome.
Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. It's the same one. And tonight, I've tried to be concise and it goes on for pages, but it's my big printing. But tonight I want to talk about the 2040 and then the regions because my observations are, as I talk to my neighbors, they know even less about 2040 than I did. So I want you to know, one announcement is, there is a problem with getting information to the public. And I think that's really serious if anybody wanted to litigate and say, hey, this was an inadequate public notice. You know, I my opinion, and you know, I'm not a lawyer, but my opinion is they would have good stand, you know, a good chance of prevailing in any kind of litigation. And then we get to the regions and I come from Region 7. And in my neck of the woods, which is closest is Ridgely Avenue, well, there's the Ridgely Avenue corridor that they're working on. And it's a case study of why you need to do comprehensive zoning and not piecemeal stuff. I've had wonderful neighbors. The area was developed in the 1880s when George T. Ridgely had Lacy Chin layout plots that were five acres going from the creek, Williams Creek, that is, you know, you know, well, Route 50 wasn't there, all the way out to Baskett Road and beyond there for some distance. That way, the person who purchased it had enough land to have a decent garden so they could make their, you know, they could do their own canning, they could feed the families. But they also had enough land for their residents and in many cases, these were our tradesmen, our business people for such skills as plumbing, roofing, upholstery, and all kinds of other services that the people in the community needed. Dad, burn, that's not true, is it?
Yes, yes.
Holy moly.
Thank you.
I've left out most of the.
If you can just, if you want to type it up and send it to us for minutes.
Okay. The big deal, oh, nobody knows about the, again, the regions don't have adequate publicity. People are not getting the information and that's a serious problem.
Yes.
Oh, and sewer and water. You've got to figure out what water capacity we have when you change the zoning, then move up the density and the amount of, the amount of water that's available and where are you going to build the next sewer treatment plant?
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, just so you know, the seven of us make up this body, but your presence certainly has been felt. I know when I first came back in December, I was like, hey, has anyone seen Ms. Johnson? And so citizens sometimes also define this council chambers, and I think you're one of those citizens who's defined this chamber. So thank you for doing well and being well, and we will see you in two weeks, I guess, at the next council meeting.
Well, my primary care provider says that I have so many afflictions, I ought to be careful not to, you know, being out in public.
Check.
But that's so kind of you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
It's so good to be part of you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I'll see you soon. And I'll go make sure you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else from the audience seeing no movement? The invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 17, 2023.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 p.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May have a motion to approve the minutes of April 17, 2023.
Pickard, motion approved. I mean, so moved.
Rodvian, second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the minutes of April 17, 2023 stands approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 4423, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Public Ethics, Public Safety, Classified Service and Exempt Service Pay Schedules and Positions. Bill number 4523, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Traffic, Vehicles on Sidewalks.
Just to expedite things, we have a number of resolutions for appointing people, and this is for the, for the, for the council. It, you know, I would make, want to make a recommendation that we sort of reorder some of the resolutions so we can get those out the way up front. So, you know, can, can I, can someone entertain sort of living a motion to hear Resolution 1223, Resolution 1323, Resolution 1423, Resolution 1523, and Resolution 1623 out of order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the role on the motion to change the order.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules and vote on Resolution numbers 12, 13, 14, 15, and 1623, is that correct?
Yes.
Has been adopted, out of order has been adopted.
Awesome. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1223.
Resolution number 1223, Resolution Confirming a Nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anorond County Incorporated.
On you.
Thank you. Kaylee Schultz with the County Executive's Office. Resolution 1223 confirms the nomination of Noah Comet to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anorond County Incorporated. He's an English professor at the Naval Academy. His nomination has already been approved and recommended by the Board of Trustees, and so I hope that we adopt this resolution tonight. He's a resident of District 5.
Awesome, awesome. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none. Well, Madam Secretary, did we receive, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution number 1223. Did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
And I also don't see anything on, in the, signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Resolution 1223? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution number 1223 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1223.
Resolution number 1223, Resolution Confirming a Nomination to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anorond County Incorporated.
Is there any final discussion? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution number 1223.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1223 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1323.
Resolution number 1323, Resolution Approving the Submission of a Name for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board.
Again, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me is Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. This resolution approves the submission of Jeffrey Jefferson to be reappointed on the Property Tax Assessment Appeals Board. He's served for many years. He's a wonderful asset. He resides in District 2, and I hope you support the resolution this evening.
Thank you. Any discussions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Secretary.
I just want to say publicly a public thanks to Mr. Jefferson for his long tenure and look forward to him serving the county in this capacity.
Awesome. Ms. Rodvian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution number 1323. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
All right, and I don't see anything, any individuals that have signed up ahead of time, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Resolution 1323? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution 1323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1323.
Resolution number 1323, Resolution Approving the Submission of a Name for the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board.
Seeing no final discussions, please call the role on Resolution 1323.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1323 has been adopted.
All right, and Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1423.
Resolution number 1423, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to Serve on the Personnel Board for Anorond County.
Ms. Schultz.
Thank you again, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. This resolution reappoints Beverly Swams Daley from District 7 to serve on the Personnel Board. She currently sits as Chair and has been a tremendous asset. And it also appoints for the first time Jonathan Martin, a District 6 resident, to serve on the Personnel Board. He serves in the State Treasurer's Office. He is a very robust individual that's willing and able to serve, and we hope that you move this resolution.
Thank you. Any discussions seeing none? We will now open the public hearing on Resolution number 1423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
I don't see anyone that signed up in advance, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on 1423? Seeing no movement, public hearing is now closed on Resolution 1423. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1423.
Resolution number 1423, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to Serve on the Personnel Board for Anorond County.
Seeing no final discussions, please call the role on Resolution 1423.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1423 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1523.
Resolution number 1523, Resolution Reappointing a Member to the Anorond County Ethics Commission.
Ms. Schultz.
And finally, for dispatch of resolutions, Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive Office. This resolution reappoints Dale Kellerman, who currently sits as Chair on the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission strongly appoints him to be recommend, recommended for reappointment as he has been a very wonderful Chair and great job leading them, so I hope that you move this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no discussion, Madam Secretary, did we, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 1523. Did we receive any testimony?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
And I also don't see any one that signed up in advance, anyone from the audience who would like to speak on 15, Resolution 1523? Seeing no movement, public hearing is closed on Resolution 1523. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1523.
Resolution number 1523, Resolution Reappointing a Member to the Anorond County Ethics Commission.
Seeing no lights, please call the role.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1523 has been adopted.
All right, and Mr. Barron is coming up. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1623.
Resolution number 1623, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of the Executive Director of the Police Accountability Board.
Any discussion seeing no lights? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me. Good evening. Joining me at the table is Ms. Moya Panda, who is our appointee to be our Executive Director for our Police Accountability Board, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Resolution 1623 appoints Moya Panda as the Executive Director of the Police Accountability Board. She is an attorney with over 15 years of experience practicing law. She has practiced both criminal and civil law, experienced working in both the public and private sectors. In addition to her legal career, Ms. Panda has been a very active volunteer in community and academic organizations. I believe every council member has had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Panda. We're excited to bring this resolution before you, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Panda to make a couple of comments and then ask for your vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. I've had the opportunity and pleasure of meeting each and every one of you, and I want to say thank you again for taking the time to meet with me, and I had the opportunities to answer all of the questions posed to me. I will not go through my resumes, as Mr. Barron has already eloquently done so. However, I would like to add that my legal background, as a former prosecutor and civil litigator, coupled with my involvement in the community, brings a balanced approach to tackling my role as Executive Director of the Police Accountability Board if confirmed. I started my capacity as Acting Executive Director in April 13th, and during the past two weeks, I met with all of you, have received 40 hours of administrative charging committee training, met with four of the five law enforcement agencies, actually meet with the Sheriff's Department this Wednesday. I've met with the FOP presidents as well as stakeholders in the community, and I have actually several more meetings with stakeholders coming up this week and next week, as well as meeting with other executive directors around the state. As you can see, I've hit the ground running and will continue pushing forward if confirmed. The previous executive director was instrumental in getting the administrative charging committee seated and trained. With the ACC now trained, they're now ready to review any alleged case of police misconduct. On another note, Anorond County is already receiving praise from surrounding counties and representatives of different PABs and ACCs from other counties. They've reached out to Anorond County for guidance and best practices. If confirmed this evening, I will continue to guide the PAB and the ACC to make sure Anorond County is going to set the standard. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to having you be a part of this organization. I've always said that institutions are great, but they're only great because we hire great people. And so you obviously appear to be a significant asset, and I'm hopeful that the PAB will work smoothly under your leadership, so looking forward to that process. Any other discussion from council members? All right, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution number 1623. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online tool?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
I also don't see anyone that's signed up in advance. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on Resolution number 1623? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 1623.
Resolution number 1623, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of the Executive Director of the Police Accountability Board.
Is there any final discussion seeing no lights? Madam Secretary, please call the role on Resolution 1623.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 1623 has been adopted.
Welcome. All right, now back to this defense bill. Oh, my God. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 1323.
Bill number 1323, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Special Events Permitting.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me at the table are some faces you've become very familiar with. We have our Office of Emergency Management Director, Ms. Pretty Emrick, Captain Rodriguez, Assistant Fire Chief Schultz, and from inspections of Purports, Ms. Velez, and from law, Mr. Hunt. We've discussed at the last several meetings, 15, or sorry, 1323 makes necessary changes to our county's process for dealing with special events. As we've explained numerous times in various meetings, this bill stems directly out of direct discussions with our senior staff at our public safety agencies. We have amended this bill several times to address a number of concerns. We've removed fees. We've increased the number of participants that trigger an event to 500. We've provided guardrails and clarifying language to ensure that permit applicants get a clear answer, that they have opportunity to correct, that there is a shot clock on the county response, additional amendments as well. We ask that you move this bill tonight. Thank you.
Any discussion from council members seeing no lights? We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 1323. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we did receive two submissions ahead of time and by the deadline today of 11 o'clock. Those were, everyone got a copy. It is included as a part of a summary that's posted online, and it's been added to the record.
I do see we have three individuals that have signed up in advance to testify and speak on this. So at this moment, if we can have Mr. Bariano, Mr. Howe, and Mr. Lang, please come forward. All right, Mr. Bariano, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I don't know where else, where else to go on a Monday night, so I'm here again. But very seriously, I thank those of you that supported the Anorond County Fair. For the record, Bruce Bariano registered lobbyist for the county for the Anorond Fair. I thank you all, and notwithstanding that, there still are some, some major problems with this bill. It's just not properly drafted, and I urge you to reject the request of the executive of, of, there is no shot clock on the county providing information. And I sent, I have some additional comments. I know I have two minutes. I hope maybe some of you will ask you some questions, but I'll be very quick on this. On page four, lines 44 and 45, it's vague and broad. The county should only be able to acquire additional relevant and necessary information, not just have an open book. Particularly on page six, lines 10 and 12, language which should be added, giving a time limitation for the county to provide the information so that the applicant seeking the permit can respond and know in advance indefinitely what is going on. There needs to be a time period when the county decides yes or no, are you going to get a permit? And it's not in this bill. There is no definiteness. And what really shows that, please, if you turn to page six, page six of the bill, and you, and you, and you go to lines 10 to 14, if you, if you read the language, the county may provide a notice, shall provide a notice to the sponsor and an opportunity for the sponsor to take corrective action prior to denying, modifying, canceling, and the permit. Well, that's not the end of it. The county may deny, modify, or cancel a permit at any time when the denial, modification, or cancellation is required. So there's no certainty. Please read the language that's what's in front of you. If you're going to pass this, at least tighten it up so, so those that are providing fairs and functions and events have some security, have some definiteness. And finally, I know the clock went over, but if you just bear with me a moment, if you go down on page six, lines 26 through 34, the, the county should provide information of the standards and the requirements and the best practices beforehand so the applicant knows what they're getting into.
Thank you.
Because even though, for example, the fair is exempted, you know, from this bill, we're going to have to pay, we've never paid before, we're going to have to pay, you know, an expense that we've never had, and we can't eat it.
Thank you.
We have to do something somewhere, so thank you very much. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. How?
I'm Johnny Howe from Admiral Heights. Any bill, no matter how good or bad it is, can be said to be part of a category that includes bills that are just the opposite if you define the category broad enough. So a statement that I've heard from the supporters repeatedly is that other jurisdictions have permit requirements, but you're not being asked to vote on a, whether or not you can have a permit requirement, you're being asked to vote on a particular bill, and this particular bill has characteristics and language very similar to other permit requirements that the Supreme Court has struck down as violating the First Amendment. So while Mr. Barron has pointed out that there have been a lot of amendments to address various things and the various concerns people have had, you haven't addressed the basic constitutional concerns. First, that there is, it allows pretty much unlimited discretion of the county executive to stop, to cancel events based on the public interest. So if you have a group of people who want to have an event, but they're going to express something that the county official disagrees with, they can say, well, the opinion you're expressing, that goes against the public interest, that goes against the general welfare, so we're canceling your event. That's what this bill allows, it's what the First Amendment prohibits. This bill also allows for a heckler's veto because it requires people having an event to pay for the cost that the county is going to occur, incur, but that could include costs that stem from those who are opposed to that group and opposed to that group's messages and what their activities they're expected to have. And that's something the Supreme Court has also struck down ordinances because of. And so I would urge this council, again, before moving forward with any bill like this, to consult with a First Amendment specialist. If you go, there was a recent First Amendment case before the Supreme Court, you can just go down the amici briefs and start looking up organizations and contacting them if you want to find somebody who will help you with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lang.
My name is Alan Lang, and I reside in Pasadena, Maryland. Please vote against this bill for two reasons. Number one, this bill is a broad, convoluted process in search of a commensurate problem is a prime example of the adage, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Already, you have voted for over 20 amendments because of unintended consequences that needed correction. The administration has created this flawed bureaucratic process when it has only described one event that needed emergency intervention. They provided no estimates as to how many security, safety problems this bill may prevent in the next year, and did not even demonstrate that had this bill been in existence at that, at that time, it would have prevented whatever incident that did occur. The only other justification presented was that the jurisdictions that bordered our county had a special events process, and we did not. They testified that they needed prior notification of events so that they could adequately plan to efficiently allocate their resources. We all agreed with that premise, yet they created a permission-based process rather than a notification system. Moreover, without any budget or financial evidence to show that providing security and safety resources for events were draining their budgets, they now wanted the event sponsors to pay for services that were free in the past. Second, and most importantly, the wording of this bill gives the administration and any future administration's unchecked power to approve the permits of groups and causes they support and reject the permits of groups and causes they dislike. In particular, Section 1111104(c) allows the county to deny or cancel a permit at any time to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Also, there is no meaningful appeal process. While this is not the stated intent of the administration, the words in the bill have consequences and future administrations may use that passage to their political advantage. Because that clause could be used to bridge our freedom of speech and assembly, I strongly urge you to remember your oaths of office to support the Constitution and vote to reject this flawed bill. Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. Please return to your seats. Thank you all. Madam Secretary, did we receive, I'm sorry, went back to the wrong spot there. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up ahead of time who would like to speak in reference to this bill? You have two minutes. reference to this bill? You have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And this will be the last call for anyone who would like to speak on Bill 1323. All right, and we will start with my right and move to the left.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Larson. I am president of the Anarondale County Volunteer Firefighters Association. I live in Harmond's Woods in Hanover, Maryland. The bill as written, with its many amendments, still would have a negative impact for the volunteer firefighters in Anarondale County, of our volunteer fire companies, also the communities that we serve. A lot of the events that we participate in are organized by the community itself, not by the volunteer fire departments. But we still participate in their parades and their standby, we have standbys for their special events. I'll give you an example. Lake Shore Girls' Softball was a parade that we participated in a couple of weeks ago. I've heard here that it would be estimated that that would be $1,800 fee for the coverage for that. Girls' Softball does not have $1,800. I've also heard that that's not the intent, that could be waived, but there's nothing in the language of the bill that says that it will be waived. It just says may be waived. The Pasadena Business Association has an annual parade. That would definitely be a fee that is unobtained, or not be able to be supported by that association. So this bill does not, was intended to get the bad actors. But this bill is going to collect collateral damage of the community that it's intended to serve. So we would see the fabric of a community, a parade, a Fourth of July parade, a carnival, a fireman's carnival, all go away because it is not feasible for these organizations to pay these fees. It's not in the bill to say it will be waived, to say it may be waived. There's no guarantee. Surrounding jurisdictions have this, but we don't have FedEx Field in Anarondale County. We don't have those big venues. So I would, again, the bill as written does not, is just collecting too much collateral damage of the community that we serve, and I urge you to reject this bill.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello. Again, Dave Marshburger from Davinsville. I still strongly oppose this bill. I submitted written testimony today, and I don't think it made it in because it may have been a few minutes late. But it dealt with the current, this gets a replacement for the current parade process. There's an inadequate appeal process where the, it's $250 to appeal and nonrefundable, and the date of the appeal hearing is not, is up to the chairman of the appeals process. And this is a Class D civil offense fine, which is, I think, $125 is the fine. But really, in the past two weeks, I've asked myself, why have I spent so much time on this bill? You know, I've been here every time. I've researched the information, the charter. I've kind of looked at the other jurisdictions. I looked up the events that we talked about last time, the one that happened in Texas. Why? Why have I done this? I've spent my career, as many in this room and others up there in the council, protecting our constitutional rights. And this is so important that we must protect our constitutional rights. You guys have sworn an oath to protect your constitutional rights. It is clear that this bill, because it requires permission to peacefully assemble with a fee, that is so, in my opinion, my strong opinion, so wrong. The information the county requests is essential. I get that. Nobody's saying they shouldn't get that information so they can be prepared for these events as they come up. But we don't, we should, it should be that notification process, not a permissions process. So, you know, just in summary, I mean, everybody here swore oath that thou will support the Constitution of the United States, embedded in the First Amendment, is a right to peacefully assemble, and we will not infringe on those rights. So I strongly, strongly request that you oppose this bill and replace it with a notification process as opposed to a permission process.
Sir?
Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Lang. I'm from Pasadena. You might say I'm a longtime listener, a first-time caller. Now, last time we were here, the point was raised of why should we question our public safety professionals? And I here to say that I don't question their intent. I'm sure it's noble, but I believe that this body and we as private citizens should question the implementation of the legislation. Now, as others have said, and I will echo, I believe that with all the amendments that have been proposed, the language is unclear. And one thing that got me involved in this was the potential that it could affect even smaller events, such as public reunions, I mean, excuse me, class reunions. But the county representative clarified that this is not the case, and language has been added to support that. However, it occurs to me that, as others have again said, this language is not in the bill. So when the county representative will eventually move on to bigger, better things, this law will still be on the books, and there will not be anyone to clarify what it meant, and that'll be in the realm of the next administration and representative to clarify. Now, one thing that fascinated me also was there was a lot of stress placed during the county fair. 25,000 people, well, I believe the word was, descend upon the fairgrounds. And to me, the fairgrounds are designed to handle this sort of capacity. And so I said, oh, that doesn't sound like that big of a deal. But what really intrigued me was that our public safety officers, when asked about the Blue Angels flyover, said that this bill would not cover that, and that there would be an estimated 40,000 people descending upon the Naval Academy 450 Bridge, which is clearly not designed to handle. It has no facilities, no bathrooms, et cetera. And I wondered about this, and then it was clarified that the bill's intent was to target bad actors. And there are, thankfully, precious few of them. So in short, I'd like to flip the bill to, instead of targeting, casting a wide net, only target these bad actors. And until that could be done, I'd urge you to vote against the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Please return to your seats. All right. The public hearing on Bill Number 1323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1323.
Bill Number 1323, An Ordnance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Special Events Permitting.
Let's see, we have, one second. Let's try to find the amendment, the amendment number 28. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 28.
Amendment Number 28. This amendment excludes from the definition of special events, an event held by an Anarondale County Volunteer Fire Company on property owned by the Anarondale County Volunteer Fire Company.
Mr. Volkey?
I'm up. Thank you. So this is very similar to an amendment that I introduced last meeting, but it tightens the event language even more. So instead of just an event that is held by a volunteer company anywhere, this now changes it to say that the exemption would be only for a volunteer fire company event on property owned by the volunteer fire companies. This is an even narrower exemption than what came before the council at the last meeting. I'd ask my colleagues' support.
One second. Let me, I thought I had the paper here, but I don't see it right here. 13, 23, one.
Start with 13.
Yeah. So I got, I got those. It's just this one. All right. There was a motion to adopt. I heard a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully, just like the previous amendment, the administration asked the council to reject it. As we've noted, the requirements in this bill are pretty limited. The, if the event is occurring on the volunteer fire department's property, they're not blocking county roads or using additional county services, they will not need a special event permit. So I think it's very reasonable that if there is an additional burden on county services or impact to our public rights of ways, that they should get a permit. Ask the council to reject this amendment. And again, tremendous respect to our volunteer fire departments. They do tremendous work for the county. This, however, is an unnecessary and too far of an exemption.
Any additional discussions? I'm seeing none. Oh, Mr. Volkey.
No, interesting. So we are trusting the fair and the Renaissance Festival to conduct events on their own property, and we've exempted them from this bill. But we don't trust the first responders in the volunteer fire companies to do the same on their property. It's an interesting point. It's an interesting distinction.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead.
For the record, the administration opposed both those amendments. And the fair amendment was specific to the fair, the county fair itself, not events on fairground. But I hear your point. I still believe the council should reject this amendment.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 28.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Resolut, I'm sorry, Amendment Number 28 has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 29.
Amendment Number 29. This amendment removes the requirement that a special event permit application include any other information as the county may require in its review of the application.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I was reading through the bill as amended, it occurred to me, not necessarily for this administration, but in the out years, we've heard a lot about how this legislation will be interpreted in the future. And, you know, our county will be long-lasting, and this could be revisited in perpetuity, right? So we've already amended out restroom facilities being required, refreshment facilities being required on the application. But this particular section of the bill is a catchall that could include the things that we've taken out down the road. So by removing this particular section, it would require, if there is something that the departments or the administration would like to have added to the application process, it would have to come back to the council to have it added to code. And I ask for your support this evening and motion to adopt.
Okay. Heard a second. Mr. Barron?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ask the council to reject this amendment. This amendment removes any flexibility that the county would have to require additional information. We feel very strongly that the information that is being requested here is necessary, although we cannot predict every, they are special events. Each event is slightly different, so there could be specific pieces of information the county could need to make a determination. Again, I appreciate the faith in this administration. If a future administration were to somehow abuse this provision, the council could always come back and remove it. However, by limiting us to what's specifically enumerated here, we may not be able to get additional information that we would need to make a determination, which could lead to a unnecessary question or rejection of a permit. So we ask that you reject this.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is it fair to say that what is currently required in the legislation is everything that you have thought of, whether it was amended out or not, everything that has come up in the past with regard to special events, you have included those things? Because I would think that if there were items that you do need, you would have already put them in here. So these are unknowns, right? This section is dealing, or this language is dealing with unknown items.
I think it's pretty general that, you know, we could use, we could require a little bit of more information that we have not thought of. And I do not see the danger that you're referencing here.
Understood. But again, I'm speaking for in-the-future interpretation that this particular section of the bill could mean that things that we've amended out are requested from the applicant. That was...
I think we did a pretty good job in one through, what is it, nine? But yeah, county would prefer the flexibility to ask for additional information that we may need.
Seeing no additional comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 29.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 29 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 30. I'm sorry.
Rejected. I'm sorry. Did I mention it's been a very long day? Amendment Number 29 has been defeated. Thank you for everyone who caught my error. Would you like me to read Amendment Number 30?
Yes, please.
Amendment Number 30. This amendment excludes from the definition of special events, an annual event held by an organization that has occurred in the county continuously for at least 25 years.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this comes to me from some community groups who reached out. Specifically, I was hanging out with Councilwoman Fiedler in District Five at a very large event the other day that Congressman Sarbanes attended in Cape St. Clair about the Whitehall property in Chesapeake Natural Resource Area. Did I get that right? Yeah. Anyway, but as I was there, I spoke with some of the folks in Cape St. Clair who brought up the Strawberry Festival, and the fact that it's been ongoing for many, many years, why do they have to get a permit? It got me thinking about other places in the county like that. The Pasadena Parade, for instance, it was mentioned by one of the speakers. They've been more than 25 years doing that parade. Like, the Lake Shore Softball that was mentioned, they've been more than 25 years doing that parade. The Glen Burnie Carnival is another example of that. There are a number of these events that have been in existence for a long, long time, and where you, as public safety professionals, sort of know the impact. You're well-versed with them. They're similar to the fair in nature, in the sense that we know exactly what to expect. They are similar to some of the other exemptions, like the Renaissance Festival that we've exempted from this bill. So this seems to make sense that we would say, for these types of events, we're going to go ahead and give them a pass. So with that, that is why I've brought this forward, and I would ask for my colleagues' support. Motion to adopt.
Ledbetter, second.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, administration respectfully requests the council to reject this amendment. A couple of concerns here. You referenced a number of events that would have had to have gotten a parade permit, that this bill replaces the parade permit requirement. Again, if those events are not impacting county rights of ways or requiring additional services, they won't need a permit. So, and then, just as a practical matter, how are we enforcing this 25-year run? I think a lot of, a lot of events in 2020 had to be canceled. So would an event that was safe because of the pandemic have lost their chance to get this? Is the county going to have to go back and check old newspapers to identify whether they met it? I just, this is a solution in search of a problem. Ask you that you reject this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to add to Mr. Volkey's comments, and I do appreciate him introducing this amendment. When I saw it, I said, I immediately wanted to be a co-sponsor. In addition to the application process, communities that hold events like these, like the Cape St. Clair Strawberry Festival, they are really put together on a shoestring budget, and there are unknown fiscal impacts for them that they raise concerns about, and other beloved community events throughout the 5th District. So that was a secondary reason for this amendment.
Any additional comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 30.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 30 has been defeated. Amendment Number 30 has been defeated.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1323.
Bill Number 1323. An Ordnance Concerning Licenses of Registration Special Events Permitting.
Is there any final discussions on Bill 1323? So, I'll say some comments, because I think it's necessary. And I want to... Specifically, to my colleagues on the right here, and to the concerns of those who have testified before, and I've said this in the past. You know, some of their concerns, in my mind particularly, are valid. And one of the things about democracy, one, it's not perfect, but the beautiful part is, if we have to course correct, we can do that. And so, where I'm voting on this bill is certainly simply because, over the next year or two as this is implemented, it is certainly my desire to pay attention to what's happening, who's being canceled, why they're being canceled, so that if we start to see a trend that is targeting specific individuals, not bad actors, but it's impacting, as the firefighter gladly put, the collateral damage, I want to come back and revisit that. But for the simple sake of just putting something together, because there is a valid need for awareness and knowing what's going on in the county when it comes to large events. But, you know, I really wanted to say that and put that on the record specifically. Any additional comments?
If I may.
Madam Vice Chair.
I just... Thank you. I just want to acknowledge our public safety professionals and leadership for one more evening of your time to put this policy together. So, thank you again for being here, and thank you for your service.
All right. Do you have a comment? I'll tell the link.
Yeah, yeah.
Please, Ms. Ledbetter.
Sometimes I can't tell if that lights up or not. I just wanted to make a comment, and I genuinely and sincerely appreciate the fact, I will be a no on this tonight, but I didn't want to be a no without saying a genuine appreciation for the hard work that did go into this. I... There's the open dialogue, the bipartisanship discussions that we had, the compromises that we have been able to make. I just want to commend the administration for being willing to come to the table and have those conversations with me. I really do appreciate it. I wish we would have had a little bit more time to work on this. For me, yeah, I have an overwhelming majority of the feedback from my constituency has not been in favor of this, and I have to take that to heart. Another part of it is, while I do sincerely appreciate and trust the word of this administration and what your intent is, for me, this is a long-term vision. Ms. Fiedler mentioned it earlier. It's that perpetuity. How will this be looked at? There's a little bit too much ambiguity in it for me to feel comfortable 10, 15, 20 years from now. How is some of this interpreted and implemented? Again, a little bit more time to work together. I think maybe we could have gotten there, but we're just not there yet. But it is with appreciation, that sincere appreciation for the hard work and the conversations that we had.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, want to thank our public safety officials for being here multiple meetings in a row. Your input during the process has been very helpful. Ms. Priyadi Amrick, thank you as well for all of your comments and feedback during this process. And to the administration, you know, you met with me several times. I was a co-sponsor on several amendments. I've been working to try to get there on this legislation. The amendments this evening were key to that. Unfortunately, they did not pass. I support the intent of what you're trying to do. I don't think any of us want to see an event go sideways. That is not what I think any of the council members sitting up here want to see. But the approach and where this bill is landing without further amendments is just too general for me, and it could negatively impact some of the beloved community events that would apply under this legislation. So, without further movement on the bill as drafted, I can't support it this evening.
Okay. Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you. I will be supporting this bill this evening, and I want to say thank you to the administration for the extensive conversations, the willingness to actually create amendments that, you know, basically took my ideas and put them forward in terms of adding very specific standards or figuring out how we can communicate to the public the very specific standards that will need to be met for different entities that will be applying for a permit. I have faith and confidence that organizations like the Lake Shore Girl Softball Team will not be subject to $1,800 fees, and I don't think that's ever been the case, and I don't really believe that will happen under this bill at all. So, I look forward to voting for it. Thank you.
Got to chime in as well. Now, again, I want to thank all the safety personnel, everyone that's worked so hard, and all the people who've reached out to us. I really have listened carefully and taken into consideration. I echo what Chairman Smith said, that, you know, the great thing about legislation is it's living documents. And if we find that this is too strict and is impeding some of our things, or if we find that we need further things in there to make sure that we are keeping the public safe, we can always revisit this. And I'll be watching this as well, but I think at this point, we've reached a good place with this to move forward, and we'll all be watching to see, and hopefully this will make our county continue to have the wonderful things that it does have in a safer and more coordinated manner with our public safety.
Okay. Seeing... Did you... Did you need anything? Okay. Seeing no more... No more comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1323.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 1323 has been passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1923.
Bill Number 1923. An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Ban the Bag Act of Anne Arundel County.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And, you know, we've obviously spent a lot of time discussing this bill and the negative impacts that plastic bags have on our environment, have on our waterways. We see them in trees. And of course, this is not the bill that will end all plastic, but it will make a significant dent, and we've seen in other jurisdictions that it indeed makes a difference. And my favorite example, of course, is Mr. Trash Wheel in Baltimore Harbor has seen significantly fewer plastic bags. And this means everything else in our recycling process goes better, because they really can gum up the works in... When they get, you know, stuck in our recycling equipment, you know, our vendors that do our recycling, it should make a difference on that end as well. And so, you know, we need to be thinking forward in terms of making a smaller carbon footprint, and yes, these are basically made of dinosaurs, and there's only so much dinosaur... What do you call it? Dinosaur squash available for us, for our cars and plastics and everything else. So, it's good... It'll be good for us to take steps away from that.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have Mr. Michelson, Ms. Velez, and Ms. Kenny with me. Been with me for all the discussions on this bill. Dinosaur squash, I like it. So, I think we've stated our support for this bill at the previous meetings. That has not changed. The environmental impact of plastic bags is real, and we look forward to supporting the bill. I understand there's some amendments, and we'll discuss them at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion? I do. I have a question, but if we need to... So, I got a question from someone, and I didn't quite know the answer. Why is this listed under public safety? In the code for it to have there?
So, as the lead sponsor of this bill, I'm actually going to turn over to Office of Law, but I think it has to do with just the way our code is constructed and finding the best home and...
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Yeah, we're a little constrained by the only having 18 articles in the code, and we did struggle a bit trying to figure out where to best place this. We looked at a couple of different articles and ultimately came down to Article 12, and just in the general category of public safety, just because that seemed to be the closest place that it should go.
Okay. Seeing no additional comments, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1923. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. We received five submissions ahead of time. I think everybody got a copy. It's included in the summary that's posted online, and it will be added to the record for this meeting.
Thank you. And I see we do have three individuals that signed up in advance. That's Ms. Priscilla Kenia. Kenya. John Breen. Zachary Taylor. And then, Ms. Priscilla.
All right. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Radvian for her great work on this bill, and I want to thank the entire council for your thoughtful discussions and consideration to get people in Anne Arundel County to bring their own bags. I also want to acknowledge Ann Jackson. Ann was a great environmentalist, a leader in WISE, a watershed steward, and one of the people who did shopper surveys. Ann walked the walk in the way she lived before succumbing to a very aggressive cancer. Ann would have been here to testify with me tonight. I just want to recognize her. I'm sure you're all familiar with Dr. Christine Figueroa Ros... I don't know how to pronounce her name. ... video with an olive Ridley sea turtle with a plastic straw stuck in its nose. Her observations and concerns with plastic in the ocean started prior to this incident. She was observing sea turtles laying eggs when she noticed one who was struggling very badly and was unable to drop her eggs. Dr. Ridley eventually went over to examine her and found a plastic bag stuck in her birthing canal. Yes, we're ingesting plastic regularly, but it is our pollution. Sea turtles, whales, dolphins, tuna fish, et cetera, are ingesting it with no ability to clean the waters that they live in. Please, without further delay, ban single-use plastic bags in Anne Arundel County effective this year. And for those people who want a choice, choose between a wide variety of reusable bags or use a cardboard box. And remember that this applies to point-of-sale. This bill is about point-of-sale. So, identifying specific items, even live crustaceans, is not necessary as that relates to packaging, just like produce, bulk items, candy, et cetera. So, we don't need a lot of amendments adding all kinds of different ingredients to this. So, I ask for your support. I ask for it tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Breen.
I'll agree. I filed two earlier, one written statements, and that summarizes the issue of microplastic pollution found in human blood and found in breast milk of mothers nursing women, and they're published in professional journals. I'm here just to see you vote and finally approve this amendment and to stop, as much as we can, contributing to that, the use of plastic bags, single-use plastic bags. I don't want to use up your time. There are people here who wanted to come who couldn't be here from the Sierra Club, so I volunteered to appear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the council, I'm Zachary Taylor. I'm the director of the American Recyclable Plastic Bag Alliance. We represent the U.S. manufacturers and recyclers of plastic bags, including 176 Marylanders who work at a factory in Elkridge, Maryland. Every day, they manufacture plastic bags of a variety of different sizes, gauges, et cetera, that consumers rely on every day. There's been a lot of talk about single-use. A bag is only a reusable bag when it gets reused. What we know is that even for quote-unquote "single-use" plastic bags, they're reused frequently at home for other tasks. Notably, reusable bags are also made from plastic. They're imported largely from overseas manufacturers who have concerning records on the environment and are also home to some of the largest portions of ocean-bound river plastic that ends up in things like the Pacific Garbage Patch. I'm encouraging the council to continue to consider alternative approaches to this that can balance the concerns about litter and waste with the unintended consequences that the bill is currently drafted could open the door to. This will raise costs on businesses. Alternative bags are far more expensive. During a hearing in Greenbelt, Maryland, their Green Community Group included testimony from a local grocer that said getting paper bags, they'd be paying 30 cents a unit, nearly 10 times what they are paying for their current products. Those price increases will be felt by families, and any bag fee is regressive. Research from the University of Ottawa on Toronto's bag fee found that families at the lower socioeconomic end of the spectrum are less likely to be shopping with reusable bags and are more likely to end up paying those fees. We would encourage, again, the council to consider other alternative approaches that have been implemented across the country and the region. I included some of that in the testimony and letter I'd already submitted to the council. I know my time is almost up. I'm happy to stand for any questions and talk about this in greater detail, as well as what kind of products are made at the facility in Elkridge, Maryland. Products that are good enough for the state of California should be good enough for the state of Maryland as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. You all may be seated. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who did not sign up in advance and would like to speak on this particular subject? Please... Okay, please come forward. You have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And this will be the last call for folks who want to testify on this piece of legislation.
All right. Okay.
And it looks like we'll start from my right and move to the left. Sir, go ahead.
All right. Good evening again. My name is Kevin Lag. I'm from Pasadena, and it was so much fun going up here the first time. I figured I'd step, or rather, sit in the arena again here. Now, I've listened to the previous testimony about these bills, particularly this bill, and when it's brought up, that all the pernicious effects of plastic and how it's in our bloodstream and how it affects us, and it occurs to me that the most obvious form of plastic pollution are the bags. Everybody sees them blowing around. In fact, I myself picked one up, a Walmart bag blowing around at the Pasadena Walmart, stuck at the trash can, did my part. But if the goal is to get rid of all the plastic because of all the harm it does, then if we get rid of the obvious plastic bags, then we lose the momentum to ban all the plastic. And as was introduced, the plastic was listed as a scourge that we must purge from our county. And if we don't go it all in one fell swoop, we'll lose the momentum, lose the initiative, and will we ever regain it? I think the time to strike is now, while the iron is hot. So, I've... Unless we are prepared to do that, I propose that we vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
My name's Elvia Thompson. I am representing Annapolis Green, a local nonprofit, and I heartily encourage you to vote yes on this bill. So, picture this. You have a bathtub that's overflowing with water. What you do to stop the bathtub from overflowing is to turn off the tap. We need to be making less plastic, particularly the single-use kind, not more. This bill is not... Is about changing the way that people act, their everyday lives. It's not about the plastic so much as it is to encourage people to bring their own container or take no container when they buy something. And that's already being done in a lot of our stores. A lot of the big-box stores don't provide bags. People are fine with that, because they know they save money. The 10-cent fee for the paper bags that would be given out is kept by the merchant. It's not a tax. But the point is to change the way that people act. So, that's why this is super important. I'd also like you to vote down Amendment Number 5... Number 9, rather, that talks about the 2.25-millimeter-thick bags. These are the thicker bags that some establishments give out. They're still plastic bags. So, that amendment should go away. But please remember that this is about getting into the hearts and minds of people and reducing our use of plastic. So, this bill gives people a nudge to do that, and that's what government should do. It should lead.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Can you hear me? Okay.
There you go.
Okay. I'm Martha Ainsworth, and I'm the chair of the Maryland Sierra Club Zero Waste Team statewide. I echo Ms. Thompson's remarks. I couldn't say it better myself. I wanted to underscore the reason why Amendment Number 9 is not a good idea. I wanted to underscore the reason why Amendment Number Nine is not a good idea. California was the, one of the earliest adopters of plastic bag bans, and they had a ban on plastic bags less than 2.25 mil thick. A mil is a thousandth of an inch. And because they started, people copied their bills. But what happened was, and they did have a charge for other bags, the store started providing 2.5-mil bags that looked pretty close to the 2.25-mil bags. And then others, and then they had to, they had to charge for them. So if you go to California, what you're going to find is that the very thin bags are gone, but people are just getting slightly thicker bags and paying for them, and not as many are bringing reusable bags as you think. So other states tried to up it to four mils, like the first statewide bill that we had went up to four mils. In Baltimore City, Safeway started providing four-mil bags because the ones below four mils were banned. So the bottom line is, in this field, is that don't go by thickness. Ban the film-plastic bags and define them so that the stores will not have this kind of workaround. So that's, that's a story on the thickness I just wanted to underscore. And we're delighted at Amendment Number 12 that provides, proposed a new title to the bill, Bring Your Own Bag Plastic Reduction Act. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Sir?
My name's Alan Lang from Pasadena, Maryland. I'd like to see you vote against this bill. I think once, there is a burden on the businesses, one, they're going to have to reprogram all their computers to come up with this 10 cents a bag fee. I haven't heard anyone discuss how now the grocery stores have gone to self-checkout, how are we going to get the bags, the paper bags? It's going to be on the honor system. How are we going to disperse them so that we can actually use these bags? Again, it's another impact on the business. The carry-your-own-bags is not the panacea. I've seen several articles on people getting ill from carrying these bags, bringing in wet products, getting mold on their bags. I've seen people carrying these bags that are all plastic-coated. They're not bringing in canvas or whatever it is you do. And some of the boxes are plastic-coated, and that's getting into our food supply. I don't think that the other issues, some of the plastic in the oceans, I'm not so sure that we're the ones putting them in, the straws and all that. But I know I've been recycling them. I take my bags to the grocery stores. Hopefully, they're recycling them. I don't know if they do. But I think that we're in a big rush just to show that we're doing everything else the other counties are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have not done my homework and I have not read this bill, so that's an embarrassment, and I apologize. But I was a high school biology teacher, you know, for a very long time, like before a fair number of you were born. But at any rate, and of course, I was, you know, anti-plastic and so on and so forth all those years. I really do believe in protecting our environment because I took oceanography courses, and boy, did I see lots of pollution that's really deep and profound. But, and I have bought the Trader Joe's canvas bags that I really like. But there is a problem. There are certain foods that leak, you know, like when you purchase meat products. I don't want, you know, those kinds of contaminants, you know, in my canvas bag. I feel that I need to have something that, you know, contains the stuff, you know, and likewise with produce. There are, there's lots of produce that can get squished while it's in your bag. I'm not trying to defeat your bill. Your bill is, your heart's in the right place. It's important to do. But I think that we also need to look at what are the other sources, as has already been mentioned. For example, straws, the plastic knives and forks and spoons. There is no reason on God's green earth that schoolchildren cannot have small, you know, reusable metal knives, forks, and spoons, you know, that are safe to use, you know, not weapons, but, you know, things, you know, because, you know, 12 years of school, 180 days of school. Think of the amount of plastic that's consumed, you know? And if you don't want to do that, okay, say you get to use your reusable, your plastic knives and forks, but make them reuse them. You get them for first grade. In second grade, you get one that says you're in second grade so that these things will be used and reused. And you give gold stars for the kids who still have their first-grade utensils, you know, when they're graduating from high school, saying this is important. So I thank you for your work on it, but I do hope you'll consider some other additional ideas.
Thank you. Thank you. You may all be returned to your seats. And we'll certainly contemplate Ms. Julie Johnson's Eatery Act of 2023. The public hearing on Bill Number 1923 is now closed. 1923, right?
May I read the title?
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1923.
Bill Number 1923: An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety Ban the Bag Act of Anarundel County.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nine.
Amendment Number Nine. This amendment alters the definition of reusable carryout bag to include a bag specifically designed and manufactured for multiple reuse that is made of plastic film of at least 2.25 mils thick and contains at least 40% recycled content.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment came out of discussion on what is a one-time-use plastic bag, what's reusable? And then doing research on jurisdictions that have passed similar legislation and understanding California and other jurisdictions have had this thickness guidance. And I wanted to understand what that looks like. So I got some examples. And this is what a 2.25-mil-thick bag is. You can only see it, but it feels like to me a little less than a contractor trash bag, those big, thick, black contractor bags. Happy to pass this around so folks can feel it. And the idea is that by allowing these types of bags, reusable but plastic bags, that are stitched at the handle, folks who use their bags for waste receptacles in their bathroom, bathrooms at home, or for pet waste, would still be able to access these bags, which they are going to replace if this amendment doesn't pass. They're going to replace with boxes of plastic bags from the grocery aisle because there are folks who do use small plastic bags for waste. And with that, motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Barron?
Administration respectfully would oppose this. I think I'll defer to the sponsor. She wants to make comments, but from our point of view, this would undercut the purpose of the bill.
Is there any additional comments on this amendment?
Thank you. The administration, I think, already alluded to my position here is that really if, and actually, I'll take a minute to address some of the comments in the public testimony as well. I certainly wish we were, as the county council, in a position to address more of the plastic that we see, especially plastic packaging at the grocery store, which, if many of you are like me, a lot of it ends up in your recycle bin, hopefully being recycled. But we know that not everything that we put in the recycle bins ends up recycled. But some of that is just well beyond the authority of the county council. It needs to be done at higher levels of government. However, this is one we can tackle, and I believe that it's worth tackling, even if we can't get all plastic. I do understand that this is, that there are burdensome aspects of this on business, and that is one of the reasons that we specifically require businesses to charge a 10-cent fee so that they, so businesses of all sizes are put on a level playing field to recoup their costs in providing different bags for those customers who don't bring their own bag. To Ms. Johnson's concerns about different plastics that, you know, we really don't have great substitutes for, for, for example, meat packaging, there are already carve-outs in this bill that allow for plastic for meat packaging and produce and things like that. But we've covered a lot of those items that are just, we don't have great alternatives at this stage in the game, and hopefully, they will be coming down the pike. Although, you know, somehow, up until about the 1950s, we did manage in the United States and around the world to get by without even plastic packaging for meat and fish and lots of other things. However, you know, sometimes incremental change is valuable. I'm certainly interested in looking at straws, plastic forks, and knives and such down the road. But, you know, again, one piece of legislation, you know, tackles one thing, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on some of those other things. So I really, I really, and all that is, you know, back to the point of the topic of the amendment, is the idea here is to really bring down the amount of plastic. And if we make a giant carve-out for, you know, for plastic that's simply a little bit thicker, we're now actually increasing the amount of plastic because, you know, if you have 2 point, is 2.25 or 2.5? I apologize. I don't remember. 2.5 mil, that's actually more plastic than would be needed in the, you know, kind of the very thin grocery bags. So it's hard to say, are we actually making the problem worse by allowing thicker plastic bags because that, those types use more plastic? So I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this amendment, even though it is indeed in place in other jurisdictions. I feel like we can, you know, we should learn the lessons and say, let's, let's make sure that we're taking the steps to really change the behavior of folks in the county because that's what really needs to be done to, you know, to protect our environment here. And I think my colleagues would agree that that is, aside from the people in Anarundel County, our physical environment is the most important asset that we have here, and we need to take care of it and take care of the, all the wildlife that resides here and, you know, be getting away from fossil-fuel-related projects, which I called dinosaur mush earlier. I don't know where I came up with that. So anyway, I urge you to vote against this amendment.
Mr. Volke?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the sponsor. We had a discussion about this amendment earlier, and I appreciate where she's coming from, and I hear loudly her concerns. I would just point out Baltimore County had something similar to this in the bill that they passed earlier this year. They exempted plastic film that was greater than 2.6 mils. So they looked at this in a similar light. The concern, I did have a chance to hear about some of the local job impacts that would happen potentially to this facility in Elkridge and what that would mean for us, abutting that jurisdiction, Howard County, and potentially the impacts it would have for anybody in Anarundel who was working there. So that was a concern for me. So I just wanted to put that out there. That was the reason for why I thought this might make some sense, to try to find a way that that facility could still operate without necessarily having to end those jobs. But I did have a chance to speak with the sponsor, and maybe we can talk to the administration about things with respect to workforce development in the event that there are needs for the folks working in that facility who may need retraining or other opportunities for them in light of this bill. So I certainly, I'm going to move forward with the amendment, but I respect the other side of it. I just want to put that out there. So thank you to the sponsor for your point of view.
Seeing no additional comments, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number Nine.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number Nine has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Ten.
Amendment Number Ten. This amendment extends the deadline by which a retail establishment may provide paper and reusable carryout bags at no cost from November 1st, 2023, to February 1st, 2024, and delays the effective date of the bill from October 1st, 2023, to January 1st, 2024.
So this was sort of a conversation with the sponsor as well. My goal with this was to move out any, so usually, businesses operate on a calendar year when it comes to their expenses. And so what I didn't want to do was, if the bill passed, have businesses in their current execution, in the year of execution, have to make modifications to funding lines to address and remediate this piece of legislation. And so by moving it to January, it puts it into their upcoming fiscal year so that this one can at least close out in a normal manner in which they, in which they temporarily or traditionally operated. And so that was the intent behind this legislation. Madam Vice Chair?
Oh.
So that was the reason. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the rationale makes sense. This is a policy choice for the council.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number Ten.
I think we still need a motion to adopt in a second, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt?
Ledbetter, second.
Actually, you did that first.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to.
And then Ledbetter.
Long day.
Now, Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number Ten.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Ten has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eleven.
Amendment Number Eleven. This amendment excludes from the definition of plastic carryout bags, a bag used to contain packaged or wrapped cigars or loose tobacco. Sorry, I can't read.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Chair Smith. This was brought to my attention, actually, by cigar shop owners. Their concern is, there is a apparent, I am not a, I am not a tobacco user, so I am relying upon their word. But at the point-of-sale, cigars are placed in a Ziploc-type, closable, airtight, plastic bag. There is no reasonable alternative to that, and it is necessary because that bag is what keeps the product fresh and long-lasting after it leaves the shop. It made sense to me. We've looked at other exceptions to which there is no reasonable alternative, and so I thought that this would make sense.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Just a move.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you. This is a policy choice for the council. You've made a couple of exceptions. Not a cigar smoker, so I'm not quite sure about this specific one, although I might need something stronger after tonight.
Any additional questions on Amendment Number Eleven? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the role on Amendment Number Eleven.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volke?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eleven has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Twelve.
Amendment Number Twelve. This amendment changes the short title of the bill.
Mr. Volke?
Am I first? Sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So again, I had an opportunity to speak with the sponsor about this, and I think ultimately she's heard some feedback. I don't want to speak for her, but from other constituents who thought maybe the title should be addressed. Candidly, I don't think this is a bag ban the way this bill is actually drafted. It's more of a plastic reduction situation. And the sponsor had also heard from some folks who suggested maybe Bring Your Own Bag might be better. So we mashed those two titles up, and we came up with this as a compromise. I think this more accurately reflects the title and the intent and the purpose of what this bill is doing, which is to encourage people to bring their own bags and reduce plastic at the same time.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Rodvian, second.
Okay. Ms.
to bring their own bag. And so we're talking about the, the desired behavior. It's not a mandate. There are other ways that, you know, citizens have to move forward. Um, but it, I think it accurately reflects, reflects our intent. And so thank you, Mr. Volkey, for coming forward and working with me to, um, create this new spiffy title.
I really like this. Thank you both. I think this does capture better what it is and I'd like to be added as a sponsor to this movement, please.
Um, I just want to go on the record saying that this is my favorite amendment on this entire bill. Um, and I'd like to also be added as a sponsor.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no additional comments. Uh, Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment number 12.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 12 has been adopted.
Bill number 1923 will be heard on May 15th, 2023. All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 2223.
Bill number 2223, Inordinance Concerning Zoning: General Provisions, Digital Zoning Layer.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, from OPZ, Christina Pampa and Mark Burt are joining me. Uh, Ms. Kenny from Office of Law is, uh, sticking with us. Um, I think we might have to consult with Mr. Volkey on the title for this bill. I've been, uh, referring to it as the slivers bill internally. Maybe we can workshop that, sir. Um, so the, the digital zoning layer was, uh, first established in, in 2010, prior to the comprehensive zoning in 2011. This is when zoning boundaries went from paper maps to the geographic information systems or GIS. Uh, base layer information, parcel, street, center lines, mean high water line is continually evolving with every survey and subdivision that goes on record. This legislation would allow the Office of Planning and Zoning to correct simple misalignments between the digital base layer of information and the digital zoning layer. This has become a best practice in surrounding jurisdictions and the Office of Planning and Zoning would like to see a similar practice adopted here in Anarundel County. Um, of point two, all into members of the public, to, to go back to the work session, um, our, our planning and zoning department put on a, a pretty good slideshow to really explain and, and so you could see visually and, and some of the history that led to this, um, uh, these errors and, and why we need to correct them. Uh, we're not going to replay that slideshow tonight, um, but you have it, uh, in the record if, if you need to consult it. And I'm going to turn it over now, uh, to Ms. Pampa for a couple of quick comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I also have with me tonight, Mark Burt from the Research in GIS section, who is the technical guru. Um, bill 2223 sets out how to define, uh, the digital zoning district boundary layer and how it should be drawn. Uh, over time, the foundational layers upon which the digital, uh, zoning layer is based move. You can think about when a property is surveyed or subdivided, or maybe if the mean high water line shifts. So these layers are constantly shifting, but right now the digital zoning layer does not shift. So this bill allows OPZ staff to conduct regular maintenance of that digital zoning layer to identify and routinely correct simple misalignments which account for roughly 85% of the misalignments that we have. Um, it will bring the county in line with regional practices in neighboring jurisdictions and it will improve the quality of the digital zoning layer for all users. It leaves the authority for correcting complex misalignments, roughly 15% of the misalignments with the county council through comprehensive zoning or through the administrative hearing officer for piecemeal zoning mistakes. So we'd ask for you to, to adopt and, uh, we can take any questions.
Thank you. Any additional comments from, yes, I think I saw yours first earlier.
Yes. Um, thank you, Ms. Pampa, for, um, presenting all of that. I, I want to touch on the 15% just for the record because I, I did reach out to you on this. There were some concerns within a variety of communities in the fifth district that this would be a change to a parcel that was split zoned and was purposefully split zoned at some point in time, um, between the parcel owner and an agreement between the community for whatever reason. This bill would not allow for that because those are the small 15% that you referenced, correct?
Yes. About 15% of the misalignments that we have between the zoning layer and the foundational layers are complex errors. It may be because of platted floodplain. It may be because of open space. It may be because at some point a property was split zoned. Now, we do have comprehensive rezoning. It started today, May 1st, um, going on in regions two, four, and seven. When that bill finally gets to you, the three bills for the three regions, you will be looking at some of those properties that have been split zoned. We do not think in, in planning and zoning that it is a best practice to have split zoned properties. It's very hard to define where the exact line is. But we may find that when we come to you, you're going to disagree with us and that's okay, but we will have that conversation with you. Um, the simple misalignments that we're talking about in this bill, I believe a sixth grader could look at the map and say, oh, I see that line should snap over. I see this corner should snap over. It's never about a property that is where the line is, let's say, a third of the way across, halfway across. That is not what we are asking for in 2223.
Thank you.
Ms. Radvian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Any additional, seeing none from the, uh, council. Uh, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 2023. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimonial tools through the online, uh, testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. We did receive one submission of testimony, um, that went to the entire council. It's included in the summary that's posted online and it will be added to this meeting record.
Thank you. And I see one person that signed up, uh, for this bill. Um, Mr., uh, Mr. Haynes? Kevin Haynes? And if there's anyone who would like to speak to this bill that did not sign up in advance, uh, you know, please come to the table at this moment. And, Mr. Haynes?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. Kevin Haynes, Chair of the Anarundel County Chapter of Maryland Building Industry Association. On behalf of the Anarundel County Chapter of the Maryland Building Industry Association, MBIA, I'd like to thank the administration and the council for taking up bill 2223. I also would like to extend the chapter's thanks to the Office of Planning and Zoning for their, um, hard work and efforts on this bill. As daily practitioners of the county's digital zoning layer, MBIA members have extensive experience navigating the digital zoning layers errors. Many of the zoning line inaccuracies are small in size relative to a property's size, yet the ramifications of such misalignments are numerous. The modernization of the digital zoning layer is long needed and MBIA respectfully requests that the council pass bill 2223 as introduced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Millie Johnson, P.O.B. 6634, and Apple Smaller. Again, I apologize for not having read the bills, but, um, I have a very strong feeling about this business of split zoning. I explained to you that, um, in, in 1880 or 90, um, George T. Ridgely, uh, hired Lacy Chin as the surveyor to lay out five acre plots. Now, you can imagine that it would be quite feasible for people to divide a five acre lot for the front part with the residence to be residential and for the rear portion of the lot that you, they're, they're using for their business, whether it's plumbing, electrical work and what have you. Someone could say, that's important. And I, therefore, based on that experience, I really have deep concerns about, you know, quote fixing split zoning. Uh, there have also been a few cases where I've attended where the dispute was the people, the neighbors didn't want to have that full commercial zoning or other, you know, higher level of, of higher density or other, you know, things that they object to. So I think there needs to be some consideration about protecting the, the rights of the neighbors. Um, I have an, another concern, and that is in Herald Harbor, you know, in the 1990s, one of the, the people was really upset with the surveyor who was off by 25 feet worth, you know, his property was given to, you know, the developer that wanted it. Well, so just give him an, in Herald Harbor, uh, many of the lots are 25 by 100. And that's what happened to this poor man. And so it became, there was the issue of the expense of having to litigate. He had to hire his own surveyor again and then testify. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated. Um, the public hearing on bill number 2223 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 2223.
Bill number 2223, Inordinance Concerning Zoning: General Provisions, Digital Zoning Layer.
All right. Uh, is there any, uh, final discussion on 2223? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the role on bill number 2223.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 2223 has been passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 2323.
Bill number 2323, Inordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies: Resilience Authority of Annapolis and Anarundel County.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me is our Executive Director for the Resilience Authority, Mr. Matt Fleming, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, sticking around. Uh, we discussed this bill at the work session. 2023 makes changes to the Resilience Authority at the request of the authority. Uh, the changes are relatively minor. It adds the Deputy City Manager for Resilience and Sustainability for the City of Annapolis as a non-voting member, makes changes to the term structure for appointees, makes changes to the director and CFO positions, and strengthens requirements for financial auditing. These changes are at the request of the authority and Mr. Fleming is here. If the council has any questions, we ask you move this bill tonight.
Any additional comments? Seeing none from the council. Uh, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 2323. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
And I do not see anyone that signed up, uh, in advance. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on bill number 2323? Okay. Public hearing is now closed on, uh, bill number 2323. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 2323.
Bill number 2323, Inordinance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies: Resilience Authority of Annapolis and Anarundel County.
All right. And for those that are, uh, curious about our, um, work session meetings, uh, if you'd like, for those online in the audience, uh, and hear the discussion that we've had on these bills, uh, that is something that we post. Uh, it is on our county council website, uh, the historic, uh, uh, history, uh, behind some of the discussions that we've had, uh, with the sponsors of these bills. And so while you may not hear us have a dialogue right here, we've had those conversations, uh, last week during those meetings. So just wanted to sort of, uh, paint, uh, make sure that was noted. Um, seeing no final discussion. Uh, Madam Secretary, please call the role on bill number 2323.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill number 2323 has been passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 2423.
Bill number 2423, Inordinance Concerning Pensions: County Council Member Vesting.
Uh, Mr. Volkey? Or, yes. I think Ms. Fiedler's first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so this bill is pretty, um, easy to explain. Prior to the, um, charter amendment, the vesting period was two years beyond, um, the eight-year maximum consecutive years that a council member could serve. The voters extended our ability to run for a third term, meaning we could serve 12 consecutive years. This bill just adds or adjusts the vesting period to stay in line with what has been, um, practice for vesting. Motion to adopt. Oh, no, never mind.
Mr. Volkey, did you want to comment on it? Okay. Um, did, so you just, anyone from the table, uh, that you worked with, uh, could speak to, uh, any sort of value to this? I know you all came forward to, and answer questions and I just wanted to give you an opportunity.
Anne Bedowski Personnel Officer, we are just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Check. All right. Um, yeah. Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. I, this is actually a historical question. Um, I understand that the change to have the vesting period at 10 years is a relatively recent development. And I'm curious if, um, any of the three of you happen to know the history of when it was changed, um, to become 10 years for the council.
Anne Bedowski Personnel Officer, it actually predates my time here, but I think was done in 2013 or 14, um, under a different council and a bill that came through changing the vesting for elected officials.
And a, and a follow-up. Do you know what the vesting, do you happen to know what the vesting, um, amount of time was before that 2013 legislation?
Five years.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, can anyone at the table, um, answer questions about other benefits that council members receive beyond our compensation? Um, I don't believe council members are afforded health benefits from the county. Am I correct in stating that?
You are. You actually are afforded those benefits. However, there's a different cost share for council members.
A different cost, excuse me, a different cost share compared to a, a general?
A general employee, yes.
Okay.
And that too is part of legislation passed previously.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. If I may?
Yeah, please.
So, um, I fully understand the intent of this legislation. Um, I have concerns about the socioeconomic bias, uh, afforded to residents of this county to serve in public office. Anybody that knows, uh, how much time council members put into our work, um, we are certainly not compensated, um, in a, in a generous manner, uh, for that work. And furthering, um, limitations on things like pensions and benefits, I think, um, is a detriment to the kind of, uh, or the, uh, depth and breadth of residents who can actually afford to serve in public life. So, um, while this bill is specifically about pension, uh, benefits, it's probably time for this council to look beyond just pensions, but benefits, um, and compensation more robustly as we fall woefully behind, uh, our large counties, um, in, in that, um, stretch. But for that, I'm, I'm a no on this bill.
Mr. Volkey?
Yeah, I was just, I was going to clarify. I understand. I think the health benefits, when we first came on the council in the last term, I think we had to pay 100% of the health benefits, but then the new salary bill that passed made it so that we have to pay 50% of whatever the full cost is. Whereas I think for most county employees, it's a much smaller number than that. The county kicks in closer to like 80%, something like that. Maybe even more?
Uh, Anne Bedowski Personnel Officer, depending on which plan you pick, it's either an 8515, so 15% to the employee, 85 to the employer, or 7525 for a different.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we will now, any, Ms. Radvian?
You just don't look to the right. It's okay. It's not me. Um, I, I just want to share something. This is actually extremely personal, but, um, I think it's relevant to the conversation. So, um, over the, about the past month, um, I have decided that I needed to leave my day job. Um, and with my day job, that means I will not have the health benefits that come with my day job. I will not be contributing to my pension. Luckily, I'm vested in that pension system. However, the, the main reason that I'm stepping away from that day job is so I can commit, um, the time really needed to serve on this council. And, um, so, you know, I have no idea. It's very early in my second term. I haven't really begun thinking about, um, I'm still recovering from the 2022 election season, as I think many of us feel. But, um, the idea that, you know, going forward, um, if I ended up, if I didn't end up running for a third term and serving a third term, that I would have given up 12 years of my life and not had any pension, um, you know, given, uh, to take, uh, you know, to take the place of something that I, uh, you know, really made the decision to give up in service of this county, um, feels a little, uh, little hard to stomach. And so for that reason, I, I just can't support this, especially knowing that this change was relatively recent in the history of, um, the county. And, you know, I think, uh, I agree with, um, Madam Vice Chair that we really need to be looking, um, you know, to become more competitive, competitive. I mean, we- I mean, we, that's not the right term, but to become on par with our neighboring jurisdictions. I have, you know, just out of curiosity, looked to see what the compensation and the staffing is in some of our neighboring jurisdictions. And we are operating as we have, as if we are still a small rural county, that, you know, this is truly a part-time job. And I think all seven of us here on the council know that part-time is a very, very generous way to describe the work that we do on the council. So I just, I certainly appreciate the intent and understanding that this wasn't necessarily something the voters made a decision on in the, you know, in adopting the twenty-twenty-two ballot measure that allowed council members to serve a third term. But I also put it in all that context because I think it really does matter, and I hope my colleagues will consider that as well. Thank you.
I got a question. So now that the council members are afforded the opportunity to serve up to twelve years continuously, consecutively, I should say, and if we reach the maturity, the ten-year vesting period, two, a couple of questions. At what age would they receive a potential pension if they just did twelve years invested in? And then two, what would a typical pension look like for a council member who just served twelve years, got over the ten, and then when they reach whatever that age is, what would they potentially receive?
The normal retirement age for the employee's pension plan is sixty.
Okay.
And so the calculation is based, so you could retire at the age of sixty. And it's the number of years that you serve, twelve times your average final salary, which is computed over your last three years, times those number of the twelve years.
Let's just say ours is forty-seven K, because it's right around that forty-five, I think we're, use forty-five, forty-five thousand.
Don't, I'm not, I don't have enough fingers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just.
Can someone get her calculator? I really want to know this, because I think it's important, because, you know, folks are going to say to us, you know, you potentially voted yourself a golden parachute, and then we're like, a hundred and fifty dollars, really? And so that, I really want that to be on the record, that's all. No pressure. If it is like a Jeopardy question or something, it sounded.
Annually, that's eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
So if they serve twelve years.
That would be a gross, twelve years at forty-seven thousand as your annual with a two percent multiplier.
Okay, and what'd you say? You said any, twelve, eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty.
All right, thank you. Any, Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I wanted to just stress too, you know, the fact is, and I experienced this on the school board and on the county council, that those of us who are able to serve really are, come from rather privileged positions. We either have financial resources or the flex, and/or the flexibility of our professional careers that you can fit in public service that doesn't pay enough and takes a lot of time, and usually requires you to have another job. So there's large portions of our community that could never serve in one of these positions just because of the nature of their jobs or their financial status. And so I think anything that we do that makes it even less accommodating or possible for more people to serve in public office is just a detriment. We need diversity across the board when it comes to types of jobs, you know, family backgrounds, you know, locations. We need that full diversity, and by limiting, it's already set up in our charter that this is viewed as a part-time position, which already negatively impacts the variety of people that can apply. And I don't think, I just can't support something that I think makes it even less attractive to people to even have the possibility of a small pension at the end of many years of public service, so.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Seeing no lights. Madam Secretary, we will now open a public hearing on bill number twenty-four, twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything, Mr. Chair.
All right, and I think I so, I did not see, okay. I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on bill number twenty-four, twenty-three? Seeing no movements in the audience, the public hearing is now, on bill number twenty-four, twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty-four, twenty-three.
Bill number, bill number twenty-four, twenty-three, in ordinance concerning pensions, county council member vesting.
All right, is there any final discussions?
Do you have an amendment?
Oh, I'm looking at twenty-three. Yes, you're right. Do you have it? Yeah, can, Madam Secretary, please read the title of amendment number one.
This technical amendment removes superfluous language in the bill.
Who's the sponsor for that? For you? Okay, go on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an amendment that was, it came on the recommendation from the Pension Oversight Committee after reviewing the legislation. Motion to adopt.
Ledbetter, so moved.
Okay. Is there any further adoption? It's a technical amendment anyway. So, all right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number one has been adopted.
Okay, and since that is a technical amendment, we are permitted to vote on bill number twenty-four, twenty-three tonight. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number twenty-four, twenty-three again.
Bill number twenty-four, twenty-three, in ordinance concerning pensions, county council member vesting.
Please call the roll on bill number twenty-four, twenty-three.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey. Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, bill number twenty-four, twenty-three has been defeated.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number nine, twenty-three.
Resolution number nine, twenty-three, resolution approving the terms and conditions of the acquisition of real property in Lothian, Maryland from Purdue Agribusiness LLC utilizing funds from the advanced land acquisition capital project.
Mr. Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bringing resolution nine, twenty-three before you, joining me at the table is Ms. Harold from Central Services, from Facilities Management, Mr. Mike Davis, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. As we discussed at the work session, nine, twenty-three approves terms and conditions for the county to acquire a fifteen-point-seven-four-five acre property in Lothian for continued use as a grain elevator. This property located in Lothian has been appraised at a value of one-point-two-seven million dollars, and the agreed-upon sale price is one-point-two-five million dollars. The purchase utilizes money from the advanced land acquisition fund. However, due to leadership of our friends at the state, as part of the state budget that recently passed in the General Assembly, the county will receive one-point-five million dollars of state funding to help cover the acquisition and initial capital project costs associated with this product, with this property. I want to extend thanks from the county executive to Governor Moore, our Agricultural Secretary, Attix, Senator Alfred, and the members of the General Assembly for moving so quickly to ensure that we can protect Maryland farmers and the Southern Maryland agricultural industry by saving this vital piece of infrastructure for them. I brought Mr. Davis here in particular because I was unable to answer any questions about what a grain elevator actually does, and we do have a resident expert in-house, so if you do have questions about what it does, I know there are some folks here who might be coming up to testify, but you can ask them or Mr. Davis on specifics. This is a very important acquisition. We did have to move quickly. You'll see in your, in your documents, there are the appraisal, the feasibility study, and there's going to have to be a lot of work coming over the next couple of months for the county to get this right, to get an operator in to operate the grain elevator for the fall harvest. So with that, we ask that you pass this resolution tonight.
Okay, any additional comments from the council? All right, seeing none. Madam, we will now open the public hearing on resolution number nine, twenty-three. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. We received twelve submissions. I believe everybody here got a copy. They are included in the summary that's posted online, and they will be added to the meeting record as well.
And I see we have one person who signed up in advance, Ms. Amy Crone. And if there's anyone else who would like to speak in reference to this resolution nine, twenty-three, please come up at this time. We will close the public hearing after this. All right, Ms. Ms. Amy.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I will keep it brief. My name is Amy Crone, Harwood, Maryland. I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Agricultural Commission for the county, but want to make it clear, I'm not testifying on behalf of the commission, but rather on my own as a farmer in Harwood. This grain elevator is a key part of the infrastructure for Southern Maryland farmers, and I would like to ask that you all pass the resolution this evening. We've heard some of the statistics already, but it does have a capacity of a million bushels with an approximate market value of eight-point-five million dollars annually. It's a very key piece of the economy, not just in Anarondale County, but for many of the southern counties, which I'm sure that we will hear more about from my colleagues up here. Other potential new agribusinesses that could happen at the site include a composting facility, a local mill for grains to be made for local consumption, potentially a malting operation, or community gardens as well. So there's also potential for other value-added products, which are vital to keeping farms viable in the county now and in the future. I've heard from a number of different farmers that are very concerned about this property potentially being lost and its infrastructure no longer functioning, particularly coming up on the harvest. We don't want any of our farmers to lose the ability to process and sell their crop. And so again, I please ask that you all approve the resolution this evening. Thank you.
Sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow council members. My name is Buddy Hans. I come to you from your neighbor from the south, in Coward County. I was Secretary of Agriculture under Governor O'Malley. I currently service President of the Board of County Commissioners for Coward County, and I know why we don't have night meetings in Coward County. I'm here today representing, I guess, the elected officials on the work group to see that this happens. When Purdue announced that they were going to sell the facility and close it, and no one stepped forward, we were concerned about continuing operation and service to our farmers. You'll hear from some farmers tonight how important it is to them, and it's not just Anarondale County. This facility serves hundreds of farmers across all of Southern Maryland. And without it, they won't have anywhere to sell their crops in a reasonable fashion. So Senator Alfred, Senator Bailey, and County Executive Pittman stepped up. We started having some discussions about what we could do to save the elevator. And as you've heard, the senators were able to secure funding through the state to purchase the facility. You may ask, why are we here tonight to talk with you when the state secured funding? We're concerned about timing. The major harvest for farmers will be next fall for the major crops. If we don't act quickly, we won't have an operator in there and have that facility open by September. I've been pushing to try to have it open in June. I'm not sure I'm going to reach that goal. But as we all know how government operates, it's important that we move as quickly as we can to make sure this facility is open in September for our farmers. We do have interested parties that want to talk about operating the facility. So I'm here tonight asking your support for this resolution, as there's going to be no financial impact to the county. We are asking you to step up to the plate, just like our other elected officials have. Do your part to help make sure we support our farmers and keep them in operation. And I am more than welcome to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I can tell you, now I know why you're a politician.
And if I asked my board to have a night meeting, they would shoot.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Craig Sewell. I'm the Project Director for the Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission, better known as S-Matic. We work with the five Southern Maryland counties, working with farmers, working with the agricultural industry. We were very involved with the potential purchase of this property from the beginning. Our interests are not only for, to save it for the commodity farmers in Southern Maryland, but also be able to use it as added value to be able to bring additional agricultural amenities to the area, including employment. I've done two, two reports now on a concept level of additional things that we can do on that property. They're actually quite exciting. And we would urge the adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Hi, I'm Richard Catterton. I'm a farmer in Harwood, Maryland. Seventh-generation farmer in Harwood, so I'm intimately involved with the grain facility. I have my own grain facility. I don't really need Lothian, but I do applaud you all's efforts for trying to save the facility, that my concern is who's going to run it. We are taking taxpayer money to ensure that we're going to at least be break-even point. I worked very hard. I was also, I'm also on the board of, Farmer Board for Purdue Agribusiness Services, and I was the one that actually kicked it off and asked the question, well, what's going to happen to Lothian? And they said, well, as of March thirty-first, we're going to shut it down. And it was a, it was a big rear-viewer move. They ran me through the gamut of trying to find soliciting farmers that would raise specialty crops, planted beans. I'm sure you read it in the paper. They said they canceled the meeting because there was lack of farmer participation. That was a lie. It was, the truth was that we had too much farmer participation. They already made up their mind they were going to shut the thing down. They said they can't make any money out of it, and transportation cost is the biggest thing. But I'm an advocate for the farmers, because I want to see the thing open too. But I don't think it's the right entity to have the state run something that they have no familiarity with, no idea of expertise of how to market grain, and nobody that's lining up to say, I'm all in. So at this point, I'm naively speaking, but I really do believe that you need to consider, step back and consider all these things I'm bringing to you, because I know what it takes to move grain. I moved my own grain. Purdue caused me sixty grand to put up an extra grain facility of my own on top of what I already had, because they said they were shutting it down. So I had to look at other ways to make myself profitable, which is more profitable for me to have my own facility than it is to depend on them that are going to take a cut of my grain to market it later, which is only to my benefit to do myself. I'm sorry, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Sir.
My name's William Ford. I'm from Harwood, Maryland. I'm also a local farmer and business owner. I feel like my constituents sitting next to me that taxpayer money used for this doesn't sit well with me, whether it comes from the state, federal government, county. But also, I have an obligation to stand for my constituents. You know, I am a first-generation farmer, and I also have my own grain facility, an investment that I thought was wise for myself to make at the age I was. My wife may say differ, but with that being said, you know, there is a lot of Southern Maryland farmers, not just Anarondale County. And I can't sit up here and think for myself or speak exactly what I want to say as I personally feel. I have to stand for those farmers, you know. I sit on the Board of Directors of the Anarondale County Farm Bureau, so I stand for all. And it would be a tragedy if this grain facility closes. There's a lot of small family farms that can't afford to do what I've done, or what Mr. Catterton has done, and what other county farmers have done. So with all that said, I strongly. county farmers have done. So with all that said, I strongly, I strongly suggest that you really consider going through with this. But like Mr. Catterton said, somebody needs to run it. These things aren't fun to run, so thank you.
Sounds like we got two potential people that could run a facility right here at our table. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. It's so nice to see Mr. Catterton again. I knew him when he was much younger.
He gave me an E my wife. Yes, you did.
I'm sorry. Well, I add up the points. Anyway, but I'm here to support this on the ground stat. In 1972, during what we called the energy crisis, Massachusetts got all frantic about, well, because the energy crisis of seventy-two and seventy-three and so on involved the fact that the price of fuels went beyond, you know, it doubled and tripled. And so people were going desperate, just totally desperate, and the question was, well, where does our food in Massachusetts come from? Can we get along if we don't have any fuel? And that was the big focus. And what they discovered is, oh, we're in trouble. We need to preserve our rural areas, our farmers. We need to support them and protect them, because most of us, you know, are in the habit of eating on a pretty regular basis. And so, you know, and that's where some of these other agricultural programs came from. Now, I certainly concur with Mr. Catterton and this gentleman next to me. You've got to have people who know how to do the job, and so they get to stand up and say loudly and clearly, we need to have people who are qualified, and they can help put together the test. What do they need to do? They need to be observed. How, do they know how to operate the equipment? Do they know how to lay out, you know, a marketing plan? Do they work well with other folks? But that's something that a good employer should do. And if the county ain't doing it, you got every right in the world to say, hey, we've got a problem here, and it needs to be corrected. So, but I do really request that you support this, because, you know, never mind us in here. You look out in the county, and again, everybody needs food, and globally, food is a really serious problem.
Thank you. Thank you all. You can return your seats. Oh, yes, please, please be seated. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Volkey?
Mr. Catterton, right? All right. I got a question for you. You were involved with Purdue, who was the last owner and operator of this facility. Do you know how many business there are who come in and sort of operate one of these standalone? I guess my point is, what I'm trying to understand is this, Purdue had it recently. They still have it. Before that, I heard it was southern states. Yeah. And so with those two operators, those are multinational operators, right? These are people who know what they're doing, and they know exactly how to do this job. They do it all over the world. Who would come in and run this? Like, who would actually be the operator? Are there standalone small business people who would come in and say, I'll be the operator for the grain elevator? How does that work?
Well, that would be ideal. I mean, I solicit.
You can turn his mic on.
I tried to solicit Nagle, Granary over there in Y Mills. They have five facilities of their own that were perfectly capable of running it. They have no interest in it. I contacted George Milkie. He has Trenton Mill Farms, and he also is part-owner of the one in Charles County. He has no interest in it. These people are, him particularly, is up in age, and he's looking for retirement. He's not looking to get into anything more. I mean, we're talking small entities. Purdue is international. I mean, they market grain across the oceans. I mean, they're a big deal. To find somebody to do that, Purdue's telling me, logistically, that we're out in left field. We're, you know, the trucking. I suggested us doing a specialty crop. You know, that's where the planted beans came in. I was thinking Ukraine. They were the, what, the largest producer, or second-largest producer of sunflower seed in the world. I was thinking oil pressing. Purdue claims they make the most money out of pressing oil, out of soybeans. That's where the real money's at. The byproduct would be the feed. But they, they just shot me down on trying to, because I was thinking of the area farmers, and when I stuck my neck out, and I called Mr. Hans, and I called Mr. Griffith, and others that are in this room, to support raising planted beans out of there, to try to keep the thing viable and operational in a specialty crop venue that would be special, nobody else in this particular area is doing within a two-hour ride. And I really thought we were on to something, but then, you know, as I solicited the farmers, and I contacted Mr. Hans, and he solicited other farmers, because I needed to come up with 10,000 acres. Not a hard thing to do if you're talking the five southern Maryland counties, and the carrot that was being dangled out in front of us was, this is the avenue to keep it open, is to raise planted beans. I thought it's a no-brainer, right? So as I solicited these farmers, Mr. Rick Lloyd got ahold of me, and he says, Rick, I'm hearing you get in a lot of participation. He says, I'm really nervous about this thing. I really only wanted five or six guys at a roundtable that we could really kick this thing around. I said, dude, you told me to go and get 10,000 acres. You're not going to get it with five or six people in Southern Maryland. That's a lot of acres. So he says, I'm really thinking about, you know, canceling the meeting. This is after they've already put a deposit down on the American Legion down in Charles County, and I mean, the meeting was set. It was in the papers, and then all of a sudden, they just, they canceled Christmas on it. And I believe it was because they've already made up their mind that they were done with it because of the logistics of it, and that's the only answers that I could get out of them. I'm not high enough in the food chain to get anything more than that. And I'm not here as an advocate for Purdue at any stretch of imagination. I just want to let you know that I was intimately involved with trying to keep it open for farmers to be able to end their careers on their own terms, and not because Purdue is pulling the rug out from under them. That was totally my whole heart. That is my heart here tonight. I want to see the farmers be able to cancel their careers on their own terms, and not because they don't have a facility to run to. And there's a lot of farmers that are only 120-acre growers, 150-acre growers, 200-acre growers that are dependent on that facility in Southern Maryland. I just don't feel that the state or the county are in a position to run a facility like that. They don't even have the people that were running it willing to come back to show them how to run it. So how are you going to take a 1970 facility and teach somebody coming in green and be profitable competitively? And I look at this on both sides of the fence. I'm looking at this as a taxpayer. I'm looking at it from your viewpoint. I'm looking at it from the farmers that are in this room. I think we all have a heart for the farming industry, and we want to see it as we ride up and down the roads, the beautiful, the fields being maintained, and knowing that we're part of the farming community. But to answer your question, I'm sorry for being so long, but to give you a picture of what we're up against is huge, and your decision here tonight is huge. There's no question about it. And I thank you for your service and even taking this on, but I don't have a real answer for you. I'm not saying to vote for it. I'm not saying to vote against it. If anything, I would ask to table it, to see if there is somebody you could solicit quickly, because wheat's getting ready to be harvested.
Nope. Did that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can be long-winded. I have a gift.
You said some really good things that I liked, so I was like, not going to cut them off, because I was with them.
Mr. Chair Smith, could I request that the Chair of the Commissioners from Calvert County share his insight on this question?
So I've been working with the work group since this all started, trying to find somebody to operate, because as Mr. Catterton, he is absolutely right. Not anybody can walk in and run an elevator. We do have a very interested partner that's willing to come in. I had a conversation yesterday. If we can get our act together, they're willing to be there and open for wheat. So I know he's not involved, but I can assure Mr. Catterton and all the farmers out there, we have somebody with experience, the know-how, that can come in and run that place tomorrow, if we can get our stuff together. So I don't want that to be a concern.
Okay.
Because I know I've heard that in community, government has no business, and that is absolutely correct. Government has no business in running a grain elevator, because the only thing they'll do is run it in the ground. And we don't want that to happen. I'm sorry, but thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. You all.
I got a follow-up from Mr. Hans, if I can. Just real quick.
Last, thirty seconds.
All right, that's my last thing. Would there be any issue, if we were to put in this, that the county shouldn't be in the grain business, shouldn't be operating, shouldn't lose money on this? Would that have any impact on your ability to find a partner?
No.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, you all may be seated. My vote is based off of not getting an E from Ms. Johnson, so that's what I'm more focused on. Thank you all. Thank you all. Please be seated. Mr. Chairman? All right, the public hearing on resolution number nine twenty-three is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolution number nine twenty-three.
Resolution nine, number nine twenty-three, resolution approving the terms and conditions of the acquisition of real property in Lothian, Maryland from Purdue Agribusiness LLC, utilizing funds from the advanced land acquisition capital project.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment states the intent of the county council that the grain elevator not be operated by the county, and that the operation of the grain elevator be under a lease agreement with an independent operator.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that last question that I asked Commissioner Hans ties right into this, which is county shouldn't be in the grain business. So that's what this says. This is not binding, obviously. This is a statement of intent by the council. This does not limit the county in any way. If the county were to come in and want to be in the grain business, we would get that in the budget, but this at least tees up that the intention of the county, of the county, excuse me, is clear. We're not to be in the grain business. That is what I've heard loud and clear from the administration. That's not their intent with this. So I just want to make sure that we put this in the resolution, so it's clear to everybody who reads it. Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron?
So I think we had a good discussion from the previous panel, and I want to make a couple of things clear. First, this resolution is not approving a lease. It is not binding the county to run a grain elevator. This resolution is to authorize the use of the advanced land acquisition funds to bridge loan until July 1st, when the new fiscal year starts and the state money comes to us. This amendment's unnecessary. County has repeatedly said that we have no intention of running it. You heard from Mr. Hans, there are, there is an interested party. Ms. Harold has mentioned to me, there's actually two interested parties. The county's going to put this out to bid, and we are going to run a process. Just this amendment is outside the scope of what this resolution is for. If there were to be a point when the county either got into the grain elevator business, or the, we needed additional county funds to supplement running it, this body is the final fiscal authority. Ask that you reject this amendment.
Mr. Volkey?
Just one thing I want to add for my colleagues. The good news is, because it's a resolution, we can amend it and still vote on it tonight. So all this does is codifies the intent.
Any additional comments? Ms. Ledbetter?
Just wanted to clarify. So should, although you've stated that the intent of the county is not to be in the grain elevator business, should, for some reason, that situation change, the county would not be able to be in the grain elevator business without administration coming back to the council, looking for those resources or the change in the terms of...
So, nobody works for free. There would have to be some fiscal cost. We would need to come to the council to put something in the budget or an appropriation for the staff, for the materials, all of that.
May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
And in this year's, in the budget proposal before us, there is currently no appropriations for running the grain elevator.
So I have not, I'm not Chris Strombauer, even though I try to make jokes like him sometimes. The, it is my understanding, and I will confirm for you, if there is anything in the budget, it is just recognizing the state grant.
Thank you.
So when you say that this language is unnecessary, which probably is the case, does it impact, if this language was approved, does it impact your ability to execute that purchase agreement or establish a bridge loan, I should say, between now and July 1st?
I'm a little, so I don't know why we would put language in that does not impact what the council or what the county can do. I think our intent has been stated. This resolution is clear. It is a, it is authorizing the use of the advanced land acquisition funds to bridge loan until we get the state grant. The, would this, as the sponsors noted, it's non-binding. It just, what's the point? I mean, I think we've put it on the record. This resolution is simply about authorizing the use of the funding for the acquisition of, or the use of the advanced land acquisition funding.
Well, I think the point is, if it helps with getting all the council members on board when it comes to legislation, and if it doesn't even impact or change the intent of the bridge, what's the harm?
Well, this amendment was, this amendment was shared with me this morning, I believe. So, I mean, I defer to Ms. Kenny. I mean, I have not fully vetted every impact of this, but the purpose of this resolution, again, is not, it is not setting up the structure for the operation of the grain elevator. It is not setting up the structure of any lease. It is for the use of the advanced land acquisition funds to acquire.
One hundred percent agree with you. My comment is more in reference to elected officials' peace of mind, and that has value. So Ms. Kenny, does, I mean, does this impact the process in any way, even if it is not necessary? Do you think it impacts anything?
Cali County Supervising County Attorney, I don't have too much more to add. I agree with what everybody said, that it would be non-binding, and, you know, this resolution does only approve the funding source. The intent can be stated in the resolution. It does not mean that it has to be followed, since it is non-binding.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Hummer. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvien.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment number one has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment states the intent of the county council that the fees and other charges for the use of the grain elevator facility be established each year at an amount sufficient to ensure that the revenue from the fees and other charges exceed the costs incurred by the county to operate the grain elevator facility.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This basically is a follow-up to the First Amendment. The idea here is to ensure that if the county does enter into an agreement with an operator, that the county is not losing money on that agreement. So to the extent that the county is owning this land, and the operation is happening, the county is not subsidizing the grain business. Ultimately, this would need to be a self-sufficient operation. Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barron?
Much the same rationale as the previous amendment, or, yeah. Again, this is unnecessary language. The, any future cost to the county, if there is any, and that is not the administration's intent, would be to, would have to come back before this body.
Okay. Any, Madam Vice Chair?
I've been really quiet tonight, but it seems to me this language is just a little premature to what we're trying to achieve tonight with this resolution. And if need be, we'll be back having these discussions in a more robust way, if we take control of this grain elevator and the business operation. So I think we can move on and call this one a day today.
Agree on that one. Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvien.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been defeated.
Seeing this is a resolution. Do we still have to make a motion to vote for that tonight? Just keep going with it? Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 923.
Resolution Number 923, Resolution Approving the Terms and Conditions of the Acquisition of Real Property in Lothian, Maryland from Purdue Agribusiness LLC, Utilizing Funds from the Advanced Land Acquisition Capital Project.
Any final discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 923.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
I have to say, people wonder if testimony influences us in the moment. And Mr. Hansi, your testimony tonight about the pending potential agreement really was very persuasive and addressed my concerns, so I'm an aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey? And Mr. Smith?
So that I don't receive an E? I'm going to say aye.
Six in the affirmative, one abstention. Resolution Number 923 has been adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the County Council at this time? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Second.
Ledbetter, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion carries. County Council is adjourned until tomorrow, May 2nd, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. We are meeting virtually to hear from departments on their fiscal year 24 budgets. Please check the website for more information. I'm exhausted.